My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Diane.
Hopefully Diane gets here with the resolutions. Did you get them by email yet?
Well, it's coming. Yes, just came.
Actually, Bill, would you mind getting us Dawn, she's on the agenda? Thank you. And then why don't we just start with your item, Tim, for ambulance plan?
Sure. Resolution just came, by the way, guys. I spoke with Keith Loewen, and they're having storage problems up there in terms of lack of storage. So, we know they've been looking, you know, for doing something about a new barn and everything else for a number of years. That's really not going to happen anytime soon. So if you look at this handout, he just, he just did a real quick sketch of the existing building and where they would like to add on a twenty by thirty-eight addition. And this is basically for storage they need. If you read the email, it's backup supplies that they're looking to put in there, the bikes and stuff that they have. They just, they've run out of room up there to store stuff. And so he wanted me just to really run this past the board and see your input, see what you feel, whether this is something you feel you could support. The dimensions of the addition are totally up for grabs. It was just a real quick sketch. He doesn't want to go put effort into this if the board's not going to support an addition to the existing building up there.
When they move to the, the train station, is there going to be extra space for them?
There will be storage downstairs there.
There could be, but I think what they're looking at, obviously, is some of the stuff that they store is stuff that they use on a fairly regular basis. So to go from point A to point B to get the stuff might pose a problem for them. It might not, I'm not sure.
Did they get a cost estimate?
No, he didn't do anything yet because he just wanted to see whether, before he gets started with anything, will the board even support an addition or, or storage space to be built on to the building up there?
You know, I'm for it. I want a cost estimate.
Yeah, well, I told him. I told him that. It's tough for us to, to say yes or no, not knowing whether it's going to be a million dollars or two hundred thousand dollars.
What are they still on?
And who understands that? Office supplies, backup equipment to, like, fill the rigs, keep the rigs filled with different things. Their bicycles, there was a whole list of stuff.
I'm just wondering if that's the most cost-effective way.
I think that there's, I, for years, they've been asking for a lot more space because they have a lot of volunteers and they have very few, nowhere to put them when they come. Everybody's at standing room only. So, I don't think that it's, I think that if they're going to do it, they should just do a renovation and they should accommodate everything that they want because it's going to be cost prohibitive to do this.
I don't know if they have enough room up there to do that now.
Hold on one second, let me finish.
Yep.
So, it's going to be cost prohibitive to do a six hundred square foot addition when they could maybe get a twelve hundred square foot addition for a third of the cost more. So, I think that if they have a desire, because they could blow out that office, they could make that the sitting room and put the office in the front.
I just think there's so much more space at the railroad station that I don't understand how that's not accommodating some of their needs.
The, I think that the railroad station is, as we, as they said in the beginning with the ambulance, is that they want to be centrally located at the Osborne Avenue site because it's easier to get on Route fifty-eight and to travel in either direction throughout town to get to save somebody or to get to an ambulance call. So, I think that they would really like to focus on improving that structure rather than, you know, the ambulance is good for the ambulance billing, but I don't think that they want to congregate there and I don't think that they want, that there's enough room where they currently are. And you know what? Our volunteers are important because if they're not volunteers, we're going to be paying for them eventually. So I think it's worth the investment now.
Here's the problem I have. We were going to give them the firehouse and renovate for them so they could have their meetings, their training, and their office up there. And they were going to keep the Osborne Avenue site as a responder and then we're going to change the office into a bedroom. So they have a living room, a bedroom, a kitchen, three ambulance barns, downstairs, play, games. They didn't want it.
No, I know. Because I think they all want to be together, John. I don't think that they want to be, you know, some of the firehouse.
Well, they're going to be separate now at the railroad station. They're going to be separate now.
I know, but, but that's something that we kind of pushed on them to be separate. So, you know, it was a big...
I think they needed more space, so we found space to accommodate them.
The railroad station really was designed just to do the paperwork for them.
That's right.
Yeah, but they're moving a whole office up there. The secretary is here now, she's moving. The manager is moving. They're moving their, their whole office up there.
Probably because they don't have enough room over there and they have that little room right now where they have like six or seven desks that are offices in the ambulance barn now and they probably want to use that space for the volunteers.
For the bedroom. They want to make that a bedroom. So, anybody's working overnight can sleep until their call comes in. And I understand that.
Like, that's why I'm saying consolidation is a good thing and if we can accommodate what their needs are in the existing ambulance structure on Osborne Avenue, I think we should be...
Why don't you get some cost estimates so you know what you're even talking about?
Well, we need a cost estimate, you know.
All right. Is, is there, is there support of the board to move through, for them to get started and move through to get back to us with a detailed estimate?
Because it's...
I think, I think what's important is, is not what they could, or should, or would, whatever, but the fact is, we all know that they need more space.
Right.
The calls are, and I, you know, the firehouse might have been a good idea at one point, but there's not, they think a hell of a lot more calls than the firework.
They had twenty calls on Saturday.
So, I'm not sure that would be a good idea.
No, no, they, they, they must have seen they have.
That's aside. I think once we get the railroad station up where they can move their offices, which is really a lot of what they do with storage, with filing cabinets and filing, now they're doing the ambulance billing, that's going to free up some space. So I think we're going to have to build onto that for storage. I mean, they've got quads now, they've got bicycles, they've got extra stretchers.
Extra stretchers, right.
They've got things that they really need to get off the bay floor. So, it, to me, it makes sense. I don't know what kind of structure they're going to put on, whether it's going to be brick, whether it's going to be, but cost estimates and everything, but it's our building and it's, I don't think it would be, it's a, it's a great addition, no matter where we go with it. It's, it's good to have. So, if we're improving the building, that's, that's...
They had twenty calls on Saturday alone. Yeah, had twenty calls. That's crazy.
It's unbelievable.
And they also came in years ago because they wanted to add another bay onto the garage for the first responders so that they weren't shoveling snow off of it to go out on a fall. So, instead they leave it running with the defrost on and, you know, so they came in at a time that, so they have, we have a great ambulance district, a lot of volunteers, and they have tremendous needs and we need to figure out what all those needs are and whether or not we're accommodating them in these two buildings or if we should be moving towards consolidating them to the Osborne Avenue site.
Well, I think we need multiple houses throughout town.
I think we need one up, up west.
Me too, in Upkell.
If they go back to Managua.
Or they, they looked at the Tumi Avenue.
The Tumi Avenue substation, yeah.
They, they need a couple of houses throughout town, houses, these other rigs.
Okay, so I will get back to them and let them know that they have board support to move forward and do a formal presentation with us and can speak a little more in depth.
And explain to them what Jody said while making the additional, you know, see if he gets two estimates, okay?
Mr. Padun also provided me with some storage area on Lincoln Avenue that's available too. It's something that I'm going to forward to them. If it's, if it's an off-site...
We have the railroad station, they don't want it. Why would they do it there?
No, I get, that's what I'm saying. If it's an off-site thing that's an issue, it may not work for that also, but it was just another suggestion that was out there.
Okay.
So we went out of water.
They have to do, they have to, the paperwork and look at it.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
All right. Go on, brand application.
Okay, so, we have been looking at the opportunities available to us and one of them is through Empire State Development. It's called a CFA Consolidated Funding Application and they're...
Watch your language.
Are, yeah, exactly. The acronyms are almost as bad as in administrative law, so, anyway, but I'm, I'm getting them down. And we, one of the opportunities is for strategic planning and infrastructure. So, we had in our BOA study some indications and others, and we know personally by our experience that parking is an issue downtown. So, what we thought might be useful is to get a parking plan. So, there's a, a portion of it that would be a study, but there's a more important portion of it that would be a plan for where the most optimum places, first of all, maximize our existing parking, so maybe reconfigure if necessary. What would be the most important acquisitions? Whether we can use a structure, what kind of structure, whether it's feasible for a private individual or entity to create a structure, where it would be located, and also pathways and waymaking to, to connect our existing parking so that it's more useful and things like that.
Good idea.
So, we got a, a quote from a transportation consultant and the quote is for twenty-two thousand dollars.
Phew.
The grant, but it, it's got some good deliverables. I have the proposal here.
So, it sounds like it's not just a study. It's something that actually identifies...
There is some data collection and analysis of existing conditions because they need to know how many stalls we have, what's coming down the road.
It's more of a map and plan.
But isn't that in the BOA study?
That's in that part.
BOA study is very general.
I actually brought it so you could see.
But it does indicate the number of parking spaces that they have and the distance to them and...
It needs, that we need another eleven ninety-seven spaces and the construction of a parking garage and they give a general location, but it's very limited. It's not enough to give us... I'd love to know where we ought to be looking towards to make it most useful to the people downtown to get, to really continue to enhance that development.
That's the important, where do we put it?
Right. So, so what do we want to acquire? Do we want to look at a garage, that kind of stuff and that? This plan would give us that. It's a matching grant, so we need eleven thousand to pay for the other half of it if we are, you know, fortunate enough to be awarded the grant. But I, we went yesterday to Empire State Development. It was well received. They thought it's a good idea. So, that's what we would like to apply for if we can get permission, but we need to know about the match. I need to be able to confirm that we can match. So, I know Tim was going to check with the parking district.
Right, I'm in the, in the process of working with the parking district.
It'll be the two thousand eighteen budget anyway.
Correct.
It would be, yes. So, and...
To see if they would be willing to donate, donate, dedicate the eleven thousand dollars out of their budget to do this study. This is a very in...
It's like an asking for anyone.
Right. This is a very in-depth study. This isn't, the, the BOA identified things kind of that we already know. It really, and it really doesn't give you the tools to work and figure out what the specific problems are and how we can address them. This study seems like the perfect fit, and I'm not a fan of studies.
I know.
But this is, this really seems to be...
It's a plan more than it is a study.
I hate, I hate studies too because they, but you also need it to leverage additional funding. So, if we have a parking plan and we know that we, you know, we want to acquire this parcel and it's become available, well, if there's a grant that is available to help us with that, I can use the parking plan to say, this, yes. So, it not only, you know, and if we are fortunate enough to get the downtown revitalization initiative grant, that's the ten million dollar grant or that we applied for with Southampton, if we're fortunate enough to get that, this would also be useful in there. So, we're hoping to kind of like try to tie things together and have an idea in our head of what we, where we want to go, what's the goals and objectives and move in that direction, I think.
What's the deadline for the grant?
The grant is July twenty-eighth. So, I put the resolutions in. I needed two. One's a seeker resolution, one is a, you know, authorization resolution. You have them in the...
Packet.
In the packet. And...
I'm forwarding a copy of this to the members of the parking district and I need to, our next meeting's until the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So I need to hear back from them ASAP.
Yeah.
So we can...
And we're working on, we're working on letters of support and things like that in the interval, just assuming that we could, you know, get you guys to agree.
What we're doing is, you think we should put a moratorium apartments?
Yes.
Because these things here are going to take a while and, you know, we keep talking and talking and they keep building and building. Now I pass Main Street today coming and I see there's a two-story building with, with four apartments that they're bringing sheet rock up to the second story into an old building on Main Street.
Right.
So, if, these old buildings now are starting to put apartments on top in the second story.
That's excellent.
So, I mean, you know...
That's a good thing because that's been vacant space. I would, rather than a moratorium on new building, I would be more interested in looking at zoning downtown and changing it back to two-story.
Oh, I would too. But that's going to take time too.
Do the five stories like Jim said, down by the tracks.
Right.
But that's what I think that we should be looking at as an overall study for downtown.
I mean, your master plan identified five hundred units, but you had one in your master plan.
No, I know, but...
So, you want to update the master plan as well.
But I don't, but I don't think the zoning right now is working downtown and I liked Jim's plan of doing the five stories closer to the tracks. There's plenty of room down there for parking. Those people that live on the tracks, as they walk up to Main Street, everything's going to get cleaned out in between. I really think that we need to do an overall zoning study that includes...
The whole, the whole thought of that was to cascade the town down and...
Yeah.
And actually, the more I talk with TDR people and then the farmland is maybe a DC three type of atmosphere with the ability for DC one through TDR, but it's for height on the north side.
Yep.
And south side sending through to maybe purchase property or maybe use that money to purchase property and make open space. There's a lot of concepts going out there. A lot of it's drafted already. I'll dust it all off with Amory and I'll, I'll circulate it. It's something we could certainly look at.
You'd have to do a plan.
We spoke about this about four or five years ago.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we talked about it a long time.
And I agreed with him that we should have tiered parking.
So did I.
But again, like I say, it takes time. Four or five years ago and we're just still talking about it.
Well, because four or five years ago, you didn't have any development.
That's right. Now, now we're talking about, we got the buildings going up already, five-story buildings.
If we were to get this approved and we are able to obtain the funds, we could have initiate, it wouldn't be till the end of the year. We initiate the, you know, the consultant to have them start. It's going to take them only six weeks. Once you have that, if there's, you know, good ideas, you want to start them right away, you can. I mean, if there's, one of the things I'm interested in is whether or not it, it makes any sense to do an RFP for a parking structure, but with retail. I've been looking at a few different options in different parts of the country and there's some really amazingly attractive, useful. And if you could put that sort of on Main Street, then I think you, you eliminate a lot of the issues that come from parking garages. And I'm not a, I'm not an expert, so I, I really think it's important to have an expert say...
That's exactly why we want to do this.
Say, this is, you know, this is the cost of this project. The town would, would need to do X, Y, and Z and we could attract a developer to do that kind of a project. So, and then, then you take that to the next level once you get there, but we got to start somewhere.
So, this is my concern, is we have a historic district downtown that we've had since two thousand and six, long before I was on the board, that has strict criteria when it comes to knocking down structures and putting in parking garages and parking and things of that nature. So, I think that it's going to be a problem to find, especially with the national district downtown, to find enough space. I mean, I always said, the town owns the parking district property, so why don't we do what you're talking about, which is when you walk out the back of Digger's, you, you have retail, you have a nice little corridor, you have benches, you have streetlights, you have, and then they could do retail and then parking on the second, third, and fourth to double the amount of parking.
And that's what they, they may say, that's the spot and that's going to attract enough drivers and parkers to pay for it.
You know what I'm saying?
They don't have to buy the property.
And maybe that's the way to go. Maybe that's, but I don't know and we don't have any parking experts and parking consultants.
Well, we're all, we're all guessing.
So, right, and I, guessing is bad. So, I would like to, I would like to have somebody who's really in this industry to say, that's the spot. So now we know where we're going. Okay, well, this is what we want to do, so let's, let's get, let's do more work on that spot. Instead of guessing, 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 we're spinning our wheels. Let's get some real direction and, and a plan.
As long as they're working with the historic, the landmark space.
Clearly, everything has to meet with zoning. I, I, I think there's some other spots too that might work that wouldn't have that problem also. So, but, but I don't know and I don't want to guess because that's a waste. So, let's see what they say. If we can get the grant, get the money, get the plan, then I think we're in a good direction.
Does it do any kind of cost analysis as well?
Well, they can, that would be additional services. We could work with them later if we like the plan and they say, do this, then I think we can go to them and say, okay, help us, help us create the RFP.
Because what is a plan that you can ever afford to implement?
They know that, they can tell us what stalls cost. They can tell us how they can reconfigure existing. They can tell us all of that information and what's going on in the industry. So, I think, I think we're there now. We need that.
I have the proposals because Huntington put out an RFP last year for parking garage. And so, I went to Huntington and I got a copy of their RFPs. So, I have all that information. Bound Engineering did the, a lot of the work for that.
And the cost, the cost per stall in that study was very different from the cost per stall in Patchord.
It depends a lot.
I was surprised. It was quite a big difference.
Patchord was like twelve or thirteen thousand dollars more space.
I didn't hear you. Didn't they knock down a parking garage in Patchord?
Or Melville, I'm sorry, I'm talking about Melville.
Yeah, this is Huntington, Huntington Building.
I immediately...
It, it varies greatly.
And it, it depends on the price of the property too, the property value.
It varies greatly. It varies greatly. So, we...
Whether you're subterranean or in all that stuff.
But this would be more site-specific, this study.
Well, I think it would give us where the need is, where we can best build, what the most optimum usage would take place. That we don't want to do an RFP for a structure that isn't going to be utilized and, and then we wasted our time doing that.
And the big study is, is what, what's needed, what do we have and what's needed and what future buildup deposit we need.
And then how can we best use it?
You don't want to overbuild either.
Well, no, you...
Yes, I think that's important.
That's important.
We need eleven hundred parking spaces?
We need eleven nine... According to BOA, eleven ninety-seven.
And that's at full buildout.
At full buildout.
But the BOA also recommended cutting down.
We have only, well, we have only five hundred now, right?
No, that's what the master plan...
How many do we have now?
They're talking about a four-level, this is what the BOA says, four-level garage size, one hundred and ten thousand square foot. Three hundred, we give three hundred and fifteen spaces and, you know, it gives you some of that specific...
She's saying what's on her house, what do we currently have down there, does it say?
Um...
It does in the study. I don't know if you have that page on there.
Yeah, I don't have that part of it.
But one thing that the BOA study didn't address, one thing that the BOA study didn't address is the potential for these apartments that, or these upper floors of the existing buildings that have been vacant forever and ever, those being converted into apartments. Because the master plan may have said five hundred apartments, but you may have a hundred apartments on the second, third floors of existing buildings that are older buildings that are not new build. So...
I don't think, but I think they're still getting a permit for apartments, so that counts towards your calculation.
I know, but if they hadn't already, then it's not accounted for as far as the parking that's needed.
And don't forget the movie, where the theater is. He wanted to put a five-story building up there, put apartments on top.
But I mean, look at twenty and thirty West Main.
That's a possibility down the road too.
I mean, twenty, twenty and thirty West Main was vacant forever and now they're all offices and they're filled and so they're taking up a lot of the parking. So, a lot of that wasn't, you know, really taken into consideration.
See, that's why I'm suggesting we do a moratorium.
Me too.
And look at the zoning, do the study, and then we'll know where we, we should be going from that point on.
But I also, I also, I mean, just in terms of the moratorium, if you say no build, then, then, then you've decided. But if a developer says, I can build and my, they're not going to do it if they're not making money. If I can build and I know the parking can be addressed, you know, you, you may be, maybe...
But here's what we're...
It's always a chicken and egg problem with parking.
Yeah. Here's, here's what we're facing now. And someone from the zoning board of Fields spoke to me and they want to know with the green building, the apartment building?
Yeah.
He said he was going to increase the parking. They, he's told them that we said that he can make the stalls narrower.
He didn't say the town board, he said the planning department. I had the same conversation. It came through the planning staff's recommendation.
He spoke to me.
I, I, he spoke to me too. It was not the town board that made that recommendation. It was the planning.
Oh, he said, he said, told me the town board. When he came to me and asked me, did you guys say this there?
No.
And I said, no, he didn't because I don't think he should make the parking stalls narrower. But you'll be hitting the doors on the cars. No.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. I love it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, so Tim is going to go to the resolution on the twenty-seventh and ask you to...
No, 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 wait, wait. Give me one thing.
I have the file on the twenty eighth.
So, I'm, I'm emailing them.
See if we can get the eleven thousand to the match.
Jim's trying, I think.
I'm sorry, Jim.
I just wanted, I, it's not on the agenda. It's, but it's something that I've been kicking around for about, I'd say about eight or nine months, we've been working and the town board passed a resolution for telecom to come in here and do a, a real comprehensive look at our phone system. They did that. They came in, they looked at what we had, they did site visits to all of the police station and all of the, they know exactly what we have and what we don't have. From there, they went out and they shopped out different companies that could address Riverhead specifically, their needs. They came back with a company called Newcastle, which is a, a company that's done work in a few other municipalities and county as well as upstate. It's a, not the, Newcastle is a, is a woman-owned organization, company. They've been in business for forty years, which helps when it comes to funding. So, they did a whole comprehensive thing, all new equipment, completely voice IP for the entire town. It will connect us with senior center and garage and all that without having to run hard fiber optic lines through internet and through what they call a fiberage. Anyway, all of that told, all new NDC equipment, they handled all of that, complete voiceover, and it's going to save about sixteen hundred a month from what we're paying now. So, all of them do stuff cheaper than we're paying now. So...
How does that work?
How's it work? Because it's, because of what we're paying. And they have all the analysis here. So, I want to give everybody a copy so you can look at it.
Jim, can they come in and give us a presentation? Because when I was looking at this, and Black Box came in and I think the financing was like three hundred and twenty-five thousand and they were saying that we would still save twenty-five thousand dollars a year or whatever it was, but we didn't have the money for the initial investment and for the financing.
This is, this is no initial outlay. This is now, the telecom is the service that put this together. They're the ones that did all the analysis through the resolution we passed a while that should have to do with knocking people's all that. But this, they, well, the whole thing is we got a lot, they had to find a company that could marry. We have a lot of archaic lines in town, hard lines.
Same with...
And especially where the police department and the E nine-one-one come in and, and all of that, that's, that's very delicate how that could be handled. A lot of it has to do with internet. A lot of it has to do with what they call a fiberage, which is an actual electron modem that connects through internet. It's pretty, pretty interesting what they did, but they, they did a comprehensive study. Larry and Bill were looking at other companies after they made their presentation. We, we did about three telecoms with them. They came out and did site visits. So, we're working pretty hornamous. And they were looking at Black Box and other people that have similar desire to come into the town to do this. Telecom, of course, was contracted with the town.
Maybe they should come in. It looks great.
The best interest of the town. They don't, they don't, they're not connected with any company. They, they did their own little RFP to find out who could best fit this.
It's fantastic. We need to do it.
They, they would like, they'd love to come and do it, either come personally or they'll do a teleconference with the whole board for any questions that you may have.
I'd like to see a PowerPoint and I'd like, Bill, to verify all these numbers.
Yeah, Bill, Bill sat in on a lot of these. Bill looked at it. I know there was a couple of companies they wanted to look at, but I just, I want to move forward as far as getting, at least jump the speed of where we're at.
So, our total, total cost is almost six hundred thousand dollars a year is what we're, over five years? A hundred and fourteen thousand a year?
When you can, when you consider what we're paying now, we're saving about sixteen hundred dollars a month. So, there's actually no outlay. The first five years, we're actually paying for the equipment. And then after that, we say something like, I don't remember the exact number, six, but about six thousand a month after the first five-year outlay for equipment. So, it's all, it's all put in the first, the payments over the first five years and then once the equipment's paid for, we save even more. The system that they have, and this fiberage product is one of the reasons why we're able to do this with our current infrastructure.
Okay.
And the system that we have now, I mean, this compared to the system we have now, we can go through and explain at some point to the board all the benefits that we get from upgrading to the system. And we're able to do it, like I said, without changing our infrastructure. The one thing we do want to do, and I know Larry just said he's waiting for Black Box to get back to us, but the one thing we do want to do is we're also looking to take our, our data contract right now and we're doing an RFP for that. We just want to make sure, we have to have two separate lines for this. We don't want our data and our voice over the same line because then you get static and everything else. So, we just want to make sure that our consultant for the M-Ware and everything else that's going to, we're going to go out and do an RFP for that, agree that we can do this in this infrastructure and they don't bother each other, meaning one is independent of the other. That's really the only thing. We missed the June thirtieth deadline and we had a, a discount on that, but I'm sure when we come, when we go back to them and say, okay, we're ready to go here and everything works, we'll look at the pricing then and see.
Do you know anything about the equipment and the reliability of it?
We did some research on the equipment and, I mean, there's all different equipment. The equipment that you actually have on your... The equipment that you actually have on your desk, you can hook up your computer, you can actually have your cellphone, maybe, you know, have, have, instead of giving out your cellphone number, it looks like you're on your business line itself and get everything in text or voicemail, um, and email and messages.
It connects your calendar, so that if you're in a meeting, it'll tell your callers that you're in a meeting.
There's gonna be stuff in there that certain people are gonna take advantage of and other people may not, but we have the capability, and we have the capability to grow with technology, with this product.
So, so is this plan to lease or buy?
It would be, it would be, um, really, I, I don't know if it's a lease with the option to buy for a dollar at the end, or just we're kinda, they're financing the equipment itself for the first five years, and then after that, it's just the maintenance of it, where we have support and connection.
'Cause that's one of the problems that we have right now with the phone system that we have now, is that we own it and after a while it became outdated, if we lease, then they will constantly update the phones and the system as we're going along.
Well, this, yeah, this comes with a complete.
That's part of the maintenance after five years, but now we're saving six thousand a year because we're paying them to maintain it, and if there's any upgrades, and as I said, this, this is a little bit different than what we have now, 'cause it's voiceover into that, so you can update that on the fly as you go with the equipment that we have. That doesn't mean that in five or ten, or whatever years, there could be even smaller equipment or maybe no equipment in every, who knows, you may be talking through here going forward as opposed to an actual telephone device.
Right.
I still think, we still have to upgrade, and I agree with you, because I know you did a great job with the, the new answering machine, but you still have to guess which number to push when you wanna put something that's not on there.
Oh, but that's. Yeah, right.
Well, we think it's with this division, so we'll push this one.
Don't worry, they call the supervisors up for everything.
Huh?
It's your garbage.
So we do need.
You know how hard it is to John, to get on the internet, to get his, his, his work, his, his agendas, he's not gonna be able to make a phone call now, because it's all gonna be, that's how it's, I didn't dial his phone.
But I think, I think it's also simple too, if you just pick up your phone.
And you know what we lost when we, when we got rid of all those phone lines, we lost our emergency phone down the parking lot. We used to have a phone, you pick it up, you dial the police department. Well, when we changed all these, and got rid of a lot of these phone lines.
We saved seventy-five thousand dollars a year by eliminating all the phone lines that were going to people's houses and we were paying for.
Well, phone lines, but we shouldn't have, we shouldn't, no, we shouldn't have eliminated that one.
Which one?
It's in the, it's, it was on the, uh.
It's a call, uh, uh.
Call box.
No, it was a call box.
It was a call box.
So, that's easy, John, you can just add a number and hook it back up again.
What?
Why?
No, now, so we removed the whole call box, it's gone.
Right, so let's, so if you want, I will set, I will make them come, I will ask them to come out.
Good.
Um, and, and make a PowerPoint presentation, and I'll bring, uh, Joy from Newcastle, um, and Rob Piano and, uh, Jeff Doggman from Telecom, and they'll explain the whole process they went through. They certainly, the process they went through was with the town, what would best fit this particular phone line, but this will put us right in there, at least move us up into push button phones as opposed to rotary phones, let's put it that way.
Terrific, thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
Don't go too far, Bill, 'cause we're, you're top.
You got anything else, you got, you said.
You can stop getting it, that's just.
You said two things, you got anything else?
Um, no, except that Friday night was a great concert, and we got another one this Friday.
And tonight's the first.
Yeah, which, what?
Who are those guys?
Larry gets a one five one anyway.
Who are they, yeah?
Brain, throat, a brain, hot, humid, must be live on twenty-five, Dave.
Nice, live on twenty-five, being from, bro.
Yeah. That's not polite.
Yep.
Okay.
There's actually this, there's, um, flyers right there.
Five thirty?
Did you get your staff shirt yet, John?
They're available.
Well.
Your staff shirt's waiting for you.
Where is it?
I'll tell you. All right, let's do resolutions, yes.
Okay, ready? Let's go with the resolution number one, two, two thousand seventy, EPCAL budget adoption. Yeah?
Okay, so there are actually.
Oh, that's what.
It's the playground.
Yeah, three resolutions that are taking money out of, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, three resolutions either taking money out or putting money back into the park and rec fund. So, when we, when we're all, when we're all said and done, we have about thirty-nine thousand dollars in the fund now. When you take this resolution and the next one out, and then close another resolution, close another project with a resolution, we'll wind up with sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars left in the park and rec, um, reserve fund, okay? So, and then as for any emergencies that happen, these two apparently are emergencies that need to be done, uh, that's as of, as of right now, I don't know what park and rec fees were to collect in the near future, uh, but that would be all that's left in that fund.
I don't think they were both emergencies, were they? There's actually, there's a mistake in the second resolution, 'cause I'm looking at the Horton Avenue one.
Number two.
Right, we're talking about.
Move, move.
It talks about Waiting River again, so that's not correct.
I think that's gonna swing, right?
It is right now.
About the beach, Waiting River Beach.
Can I just, yes, my question is, why is it EPCAL budget adjustment for a playground at Waiting River?
Right, you have a second? I just realized it's a mistake in the second resolution.
Someone walked a dog.
The one I saw, it may, may be wrong, I may have to go and change it, this was done, I, I highlighted it, because I don't think it's.
No, not that.
So I pause it, that's.
It just says.
That's not an emergency, is what we're saying.
We're on number one. No, you know what, I took the old resolution and copied it over, so.
Yeah, that's what I figured. So, Bill, that they're not both emergencies, it's just the Waiting River one.
Okay. So, which was an old one anyway.
Well, it certainly shouldn't be an EPCAL budget adoption.
It's not even an EPCAL budget adoption.
The one's was four. Right, so.
Right?
What's this for?
Number one.
Which one?
No, number one is, is the twenty-one thousand transfer.
Yeah, that's to complete the Veterans Park project, the, um, the installation is seven thousand dollars, the surfacing is thirty-one thousand dollars, um, and we had about seventeen thousand dollars left in the account. Yeah, so both of them are gonna be wrong, yeah.
So, just so you know, they both, they're referring to Waiting River.
Yeah. Both of them, I just took off that template.
Oh, so number two, two.
Yeah, I didn't even read the top part. Basically, look at just the numbers, I guess, and the, the wording I'll fix.
So we're fixing.
So what he's saying is that, go ahead, I'll let you.
No, 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 I kinda just handed it in so you guys can review it and then kinda fix it up.
Well, I see the numbers, it's just the.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But it's coming from park and rec fees.
Yeah.
We already agreed to the EPCAL.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we already agreed to the EPCAL.
There is a project for that, but I need more now, so.
Okay.
Because of the safety surfacing, so it costs a lot of money.
So, you gonna up, up, upgrade these?
Well, basically, that's the playground that you like, it's, it's two to five year olds.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, so basically what it came down to, the engineering department came back to me with their estimation of, of the thirty-one thousand dollars for the safety surfacing, it's pouring place, uh, and you have to do it down there, because we could not keep up. B and G can't keep up to begin with, with the chips and stuff. Well, that's what they use now.
This is at Staski Park.
No, this is Calvert, Veterans Park.
I thought you put the kids stuff in Staski Park.
There is another playground at Staski Park, so we have equipment for that, but the one that I'm talking about is the brand new one, that's two to five year old, that's here.
Okay, you're gonna put another one there.
Okay, between the fields, I know we have.
And it's gonna be done next week, actually, if, um, the transfer's done, makes it surge.
As long as these, as long as these resolutions get worked right, as far as.
So, let me just, um, address that, Jim, so, the second one.
Joe Young is the next one.
Six thousand dollar one?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, we only have one meeting here, I got, these guys are talking over here, you guys are talking over there, and I don't know who to listen to.
Sorry.
We're more important, so I would listen down here.
Agreed. But you was, yeah, I'm still want my question answered.
Well, I want to answer, I wanted to get the answer too.
I just wanna make sure I was making the right corrections, please, so, the first one.
The first one, which is yours.
So we have to change the.
Title.
Title to the, to, um.
Can you go back to the first one?
Waiting River Beach, right?
Yes.
So the first one we're gonna change.
And it's also the title, the EPCAL, it's not EPCAL, right?
No, it's not EPCAL.
EPCAL budget adoptions options?
The title of the first one says Horton Avenue Budget Adoption, but it really is Waiting River Beach, correct?
Right.
The first one.
What are you talking about?
The first one.
One meeting.
One is for EPCAL, one for M. So the first one, the twenty-one five oh two, is for the EPCAL playground.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I wanted to go into that same project that we have, right, we just need more money in that project number.
But the body's gotta be changed, 'cause it's.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm gonna say this again, I just put through the numbers, and I thought it was just a rough draft, that's my fault, I, I didn't, and I put it in late yesterday, so.
We forgive you. The second resolution is.
Number two.
Incomplete in, in, in my college plan.
But the Mill, never says emergency, Millbrook Gables. That's a.
Is it easier, maybe just?
That, did you, do you have a copy of that resolution?
Say you wanna do it, I'll just redo it.
Yes, right.
If you don't mind, yeah, you'll redo those two.
Oh, I will, yeah, I feel better.
And number two is Horton Avenue, not Millbrook Gables?
Is that, like, even the numbers, I wanna make sure we're correct.
So the Millbrook Gables.
Number two is Horton Avenue, not Millbrook Gables. Correct. No, no, it's, it's, yeah, EPCAL's the first one, playground, Horton Avenue's the second one.
Absolutely.
I'm saying, I'm sorry, 'cause you're not, you're, it's your second one.
You killed.
Can we just go to the right one? We're on the second one right now, the second resolution in the packet is the two thousand thirteen Millbrook Gables Playground Project Closure.
Yes.
Yeah, my, you are?
Bill prepared this because you need to close out, you had two thousand nine hundred dollars left in your Millbrook Gables, um, line, so he's closing that out and taking it out, that's resolution two, so that's, that's accurate.
Oh, correct. I don't have that one.
That one's good.
All right, so number two is okay?
Yes, this is.
Yeah, basically, what, what Bill's doing, and I had asked him, there's more too, is, there's, there's several projects that we have completed and there's money in there, so we're gonna liquidate all those accounts, because they're closed, and put it back into the general.
Into the park and rec fund that it came from, right.
Park and rec.
So you have a cost estimate for this twenty-one thousand five hundred and two for the.
It's exactly what it's, see, twenty-one five oh two is the, is the balance between adding the installation of seven grand and the safety surface of thirty-one thousand. We had seventeen thousand in the account, so you do all the math, twenty-one five oh two is the amount that we need.
So then, resolution three has nothing to do with recreation, that's, that's an ambulance equipment.
I'm, I'm saying. It spells everything else.
That's the ambulance equipment, that, I think is, for the, for the overhead, for the new vehicle they got?
Yes, so.
Yes.
So what was, what was the cost of the vehicle to begin with?
Twelve thousand dollars.
Right, and so, we have a twelve thousand dollar, are you on the resolution? I'm, I'm still back on the recreation, did rec committee, did you, was this discussed with rec committee?
The six thousand was not, because I was not aware of that during the meeting.
How much they cost, twelve thousand?
Okay, so you'll send out an email to all the members and know the addition.
I'll tell them, yeah, I always tell them. Twenty-one five oh two is part of.
See, that's the thing, you know, I, I go and price these things, it's good prices.
I'll, I'll say, I say.
But they want the Taj Mahal of everything, and so they say, well, we're not gonna buy that, we're gonna go buy this from this guy.
Sorry, that's.
Me too. Okay, now we're on the third resolution.
Huh?
I agree, we should have that conversation.
We should.
Where did this resolution come from, you got a call from Keith?
From the seventy-two dollars.
The ambulance, yeah.
Yes, that came directly from the ambulance corp.
So this is a top to go on, they're a twelve thousand dollar gator, a seven thousand dollar expenditure, to come out of that.
Well, I, I understand, but we're just talking about this, I could've got it cheaper than twelve thousand dollars, a good one, the ones we're using at Live at Twenty-Five.
I think they're saying they weren't equipped.
They didn't want that, they wanted to go buy their own, then they go buy their own, and they buy a trailer, they buy the trailer too small, then they go buy a bigger trailer, now they have two trailers, right? We didn't even know about the second trailer they were buying, and now the, the small trailer's gonna use for, uh, uh, emergencies if they have to go someplace and, you know. I think we should be the ones that are telling them what to do, instead of them telling us what to do.
Well, I think that if they have a need, they should probably, they should probably come to the board and talk to the board about what the need is for a seventy-two hundred dollar transfer out of their fund balance.
Well, I agree, I can give Alan a call and tell him that he needs to coordinate with you guys, you know, and this is, and his company, why they need this, and have him explain to you.
This is a twelve thousand dollar gator that they wanna put a seven thousand dollar roof on?
Yes, not a roof, bars, so when they go through trees.
A roll bar, oh, he needs.
The roll bars.
Okay.
It's gonna cost seven thousand dollars.
Hold it, and I'll reach out to Alan.
Thank you. Just until we know that Alan spoke to the board.
She would wear a helmet.
What did you do to get this thing moving?
Tell him to wear a helmet.
Helmet, no, no, no.
All right, resolution four is back to recreation, Ray said he's going to make the changes on the tax.
Yeah, I'll reword it, yeah, I'll make it a rough draft to a final draft.
So that's transferred.
How do I do?
From Columbia County.
Yeah, well, what do I do if it's out again?
Not, not looking.
So that's taking into consideration.
And I didn't read six out of them? Yeah.
I'm gonna do this.
They would do forty-six, but.
But that would pay for that.
So Ray, when you're transferring six thousand dollars, you're not taking into account that we have four thousand from Columbia here?
I can't, because we have to get it done first, I mean, if I wait, right now, everything has to be in transit, it's the tournament's at the twelfth of August, so what I had asked Jody is just, when they make the check, make it out to the town of Riverhead, and we'll replace the funds.
Would they be okay with that?
Yeah.
What about Wade River, what's happening with that?
What's happening with the stall?
That was supposed to be done before the boat.
Twenty-first, the shipment is coming in, twenty-first of July.
Okay.
So.
All right, 'cause that was supposed to be.
I'm at the mercy of the companies.
Okay.
So I tell them as fast as possible, I was all over them, they told me the twenty-first is the best I could do.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Ray.
All good?
Yeah, so the resolution five is exactly what Dawn was telling us about, um, authorizing funding application to New York State Consolidated Funding, so that's what we already talked about.
Yeah, that's good.
We open all the beaches at seven o'clock today.
Nice, okay.
'Cause anytime it hits the main, do you, I tell them they gotta open.
Well, you should maybe see that, so that's.
Yeah, I'll let you stay.
All right.
Uh, just before we move on, um. We've been in discussion with Ray after a meeting with Sound Shore Heights, the Reeves Park people about trying to keep the beaches open a little bit longer, um, especially in the hot weather, and today's the first day they're keeping them open till seven o'clock.
With lifeguards?
No, not with lifeguards, but with, um, like, the restroom facilities and such are gonna be kept open. Lifeguards are done when their time is over, but a lot of people still go to the beach after dinner or for the sunsets or whatever, and there were complaints that the bathrooms aren't open, and everything's locked up and closed at five o'clock, and it was a little too early. So he's got, switched some people around and is, is keeping it open till seven, so that should make a lot of people happy.
Did Ray give us the names of those, those lifeguards who swam out from Reeves Beach?
Not, I'm not aware of it, no.
Huh?
I'm not aware of it, I think only one lifeguard went, went out and stayed in.
They swam out, they, they, they helped, they helped somebody until the, uh.
Yeah.
Waiting River Fire Department got there.
He didn't give me the names, no.
Give me that.
You know what?
We're, I know, let's move on, please, and figure it out.
Stick with our program here.
Yeah, maybe we should, we should say, okay.
We have, um, we have a lot of washouts on the North Shore on the beaches too, that.
Yeah, I know, I've got the pictures.
Number seven.
Number seven, secret resolution regarding application for Empire State Development Corporation Consolidated Funding Application, round seven of strategic planning and feasibility study, great, isn't that all we just talked about?
Yeah, that's, that's secret for that application. Now it's seven, ratifies.
Great.
Go ahead.
Ratifies the promotion of Police Officer Edward Carey to the position of Detective Grade Three, this was supposed to be done.
Was it Carey?
Completed his eighteen months of investigative work.
Carey, this promotion to detective.
And by the way, he has to be promoted.
Well, unless you put him back to the P O, but.
No.
We've done the math, it's the same money, but.
That's right, eight, right, right. The men's resolution five fourteen.
This is just, this is correcting.
About the bus drivers.
This is correcting the start date of one of our employees that you already ratified, but the, the date was incorrect, so we had to change it to June twenty-eighth for a start date.
Okay. Number nine, accept the reservation of a maintenance mechanic.
He worked with a red, um, home tour.
Keith?
Well, you got Freddie Anderson, huh? You got nobody, huh, right?
Exactly.
Okay. These things, I, I can't, I need these, I just don't work.
A call on detention attendant, I'll use your.
Hey, you wanna try that one? That'll work. Appoint a call on detention attendant. Who's this? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Jones?
Happy to have them.
What?
Okay. Appoint a seasonal traffic control officer.
Control F, Jones?
Oh, this morning, I saw a traffic control officer marking tires on Main Street for the Jamal Park.
They were doing it yesterday too.
Very good. Well, I, I wasn't, I didn't see him yesterday. Today I did see him. So, he's very good. Appoint, say, seasonal lifeguard to the recreational, uh, Recreation Department, twelve. Okay with that? We need that. Thirteen, appoint a policeman, chaff Rome to the Recreation Department. Okay?
Yep.
Fourteen, ratify the appointment of seasonal park attendant to the Recreation Department. Fifteen, ratify the appointment of seasonal park attendant to the Recreation Department. Seventeen, ratify the appointment of a seasonal recreation to the Recreation Department.
We're gonna have these all put together for now.
Can, can we all put this together?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, seventeen, amends the salaries of the Recreation Employees. Who's this?
Everybody.
Okay. That's a whole list. Adopt a local, uh, eighteen, adopt a local law to add chapter two fifty entitled municipal building, energy benchmarking of the code of the town of Riverhead. That's what we were talking about?
Yep.
This is making him the czar of energy.
Yeah, you probably have a couple carrying it, Bill, I see.
Nineteen, approves chapter two fifty-five application of James Ford Fire Department to conduct a fireman's carnival. The only thing I wanna say about this is they, uh, they have people walking around with beer. And I thought we were discontinuing out on these, on these places, huh?
Actually, their application showed, um, a pen. Yeah, their application showed a pen.
They had a beer garden.
It should show a pen. Last year they didn't have it, okay.
It showed it on their application.
They had it last year.
Had it last year.
Okay. Approves the application for fireworks permit, James Ford Fire Department. They have that every year. Twenty-one, approves chapter two fifty-five application of the County Play Medical Center Northwell Health Family Festival, August ninth through August twelfth. Where's that gonna be held?
Waiting River.
That's Waiting River.
Where they had their carnival up there every year.
Any others, probably, yeah, yeah.
Oh, same spot in Wade River.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty, twenty-one, approves chapter two fifty, oh, that was it, okay.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Two on twenty-two now. Authorize the supervisor to execute a one-year renewal to the professional services agreement with Quinn's and Fourth Development Incorporated, Q E D. What is that?
So, Bob had sent an email to all of you explaining this.
They have the, um, police department.
What is that?
Here's the contract, if you wanna pass the ministry.
What is it here?
He came in just after I left.
Oh, software. Okay, software.
Okay, twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Approve settlement of legal action by the town of Riverhead against Mariah Carlson, E T L A.
Head L.
A L. What's this?
That's a settlement.
This is the settlement with Farm Country Kitchen.
Okay. Twenty-four, resolution memo, uh, memorializing support of East Hampton Town's proposed amendment to the FAA reauthorizing legislation to clarify the two oh, two hundred and five settlement agreement between town of East Hampton and the FAA.
This is just leaning.
That's for the helicopters, right?
Yeah, this is with the helicopter problem, uh, on the east end, but it's tied indirectly to East Hampton. Supervisor Cantwell, uh, has requested the surrounding towns to support their endeavor out there.
Okay.
And that's what this is, this is a resolution to help them, or help support them in their quest to try to put an end to this.
Okay.
Absolutely, are we getting letters?
Unfair situation of our, of our helicopter noise.
Are we getting letters of support from the committee people as well, Tim, that you're on, the helicopter, just the town?
No. Yeah, it was, they just asked for the towns to do it.
Okay. Twenty-five, authorize town clerk to publish and post public notice to consider a local law to add a new chapter three oh one entitled zoning and land development of the Riverhead Town Code, and that was for the movies.
That's what I sent you when you asked that last week.
Drive through windows, it's, it's a window with the movie comes for that drive-in?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-six, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Riverhead Foundation for Marine Research and Preservation, twentieth annual five K run for the Riddley Sunday, October twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. East Main Street. Okay, it's a Saturday, right? Yeah, Saturday. Approve, all right, twenty-seven, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Rugged Races LLC, five K obstacle race entitled Rugged Manic, Saturday, July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Who is this gonna be?
Couple of sports.
Not Edwards Avenue.
This is the one we voted on prior and voted it down at, uh, the sports complex up in Calberton, the former Calberton lengths. They have since reached out and recontacted us. They have filed a site plan with the building department, um, and it has been deemed complete. But deemed complete only means that it looks good on the surface. It hasn't actually gone before the planning board for approval. But because we allowed this to happen last year, and then we turned them down this year because there wasn't any movement, they finally made some movement and are attempting to work in the right direction to make this happen. Um, they reached out to a couple of us board members and we asked to put it back up again for consideration.
But I want you to know, there will also be another resolution, there's an agreement in which they are not going to make any further applications until their site.
Correct. This was, this was the last, yes, this was Jody's recommendation. Give this to them, but that's it.
And I was one of the fire marshal has been in touch with them and there's no safety issues, um, that he can see, so he was satisfied as well.
Right, and he's also getting in contact with the police for traffic in, uh.
Did they put together a parking plan as to where they propose to park the cars? Because I would hate to see that, um, driveway that goes into the site narrow by people parking on both sides of that driveway, where if they do need an ambulance or an emergency vehicle.
My understanding is they were gonna put them on that fairway where they've used in the past, it's back off that entry roadway.
Okay.
The fairway's number four, the long one.
Yeah, I, I don't know what number it was. Right, the long one.
Right off there. The long one, right next to that road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-eight.
Okay. Twenty-eight, amends bylaws of senior citizen advisory coun- council.
Do you wanna tell us what the amendments?
You do.
Uh, yes, I'll read what it is.
Yeah, do you know what this is?
I think it has to do with, um, how your, your members serve.
Uh, yeah, they, they changed the, uh, the bylaws because, uh, originally you couldn't serve any position and continue, like, say as the, the chair. After a year or after two years, you couldn't do it any longer. They changed that and took all the stipulations away so that if you're the chair, you could be the chair the following year with no timeline that's on it. Because nobody really wanted to be the chair, so the person that was there, or you needed to do it, so they had to change the bylaws for that.
Twenty-nine, appoint member of the senior citizen advisory council. Let's see, who is this?
Carrie McCollum Smith.
Oh, Joy.
No, it says Carrie.
Joy Ranken. Thirty, authorize the town of Riverhead Senior Citizen Advisory Council to facilitate an invitation to the Riverhead Business Community to participate in a senior citizen discount week, December three, to the tenth, two thousand seventeen.
This is, um, we're gonna be working with the.
Downtown.
Yeah, we're gonna be, uh, the first week in December, December third through the tenth is gonna be a senior citizen discount week that we're working in conjunction with the bid in the chamber. Um, they fully support this, so we're gonna, uh, they're gonna help us promote it, actually. Uh, they did it last year or the year before and it wasn't as successful as they'd hoped it to be, but it wasn't advertised very well. So, we're looking to promote it and get it out there with the help of, uh, the bid and, and the chamber. Um, and it's all voluntary on the business's part. They can do whatever percentage or discounts that they would like to give. And, but the only thing is it can't be, uh, the discount can't be used in conjunction with any other discount.
Okay. Oh, can I ask a question?
No.
Thirty-one through?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. It's reappoint members of the senior advisory. Can we put them all together? They just name them as, as one, all right?